Good evening, and welcome to the February the 11th work session. City Manager.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I would like to introduce the item, the Citizen Government Review Committee, and the presentation will be by Jim Reardon, who is the committee chair.
Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the invitation to be with you, and thanks for putting together the committee in response to the resolution. Kind of wanted to do a little update for you and give you an idea of the direction that On May 31st, we are supposed to submit a report in our recommendations to the governing body. We have been meeting weekly, and just to refresh your memory, the committee members are Tina Williams at Washburn University, John Mav, and John works at Goodyear. Maynard Oliverius is retired hospital executive, and Judy Moller is with me today. There's Tina. Hi Tina. And most of us have been able to meet almost every week. We're holding meetings in the old council chambers on Tuesdays, and I'm sorry, on Thursdays, starting at 1:00. We've set aside 1 to 3, and we're receiving input from a variety of different people. And our first presentation was done by Don Moller, who recently retired from the League of Municipalities. Don gave us a very good background, history, explanation of five different forms of government, a little bit about the charter ordinance, and some of the problems that he sees in the drafting of the ordinance. We met with former Mayor Bill Bunton this last Tuesday, and he gave us his perception of what it's like to be mayor under the current form of government, and actually, he was the first mayor to serve in the present, serve under the present form of government, and gave us some insight, I believe, into some of the things that he would recommend to make it as good as it could be. We also heard from Lisa Stubbs. Lisa was on the council at the time, and of course, John Mav was as well, and John served as a commentator. But we wanted to know why we have what we have, and what the logic was at the time, and to kind of refresh our memory going back to the implementation back, I think, and started, it was implemented, I guess, in 2005. So, we continue to build a bank of information, and we perceive our duty is to, mainly, we're here to listen and to learn, and then ultimately, as we learn from you and from other commentators and people that provide information, then we'll put together our report. I guess, as far as being the chair of the committee, my feeling is that there probably are maybe two compelling, or maybe three compelling things that can be done with this particular inquiry. And by the way, I don't perceive this inquiry as being quite as motivated as maybe some of the other inquiries early on. Early on, we were still trying to figure out what kind of form of government we had. I think most of us have a pretty good idea now, have gone around the track a few times, and are pretty comfortable, or pretty familiar, at least, with what you have to work with and what you're doing. But our, my kind of perception, based on having served 12 years on the council, and maybe the most compelling reasons to change the form of government is that what you have isn't working, but we've been using the same form, different derivatives of it, but the same form, if you will, and certainly different leadership styles that we've had, both on the council and on the mayor's chair. But it has endured, and served adequately to deal with the different personalities and the different agendas that have been presented over the years, and has still survived in its somewhat present form, same number of council members, same number of, in the same form. So, one of the reasons why you would change the form of government is that what you've got isn't working. Another reason might be that economic development dictates that we adopt some kind of form of government that's a little bit more responsive, or a little bit more accommodative to economic development that's occurring. And at one time, the city did, actually initiated economic development. You remember back when we had a racetrack? That was initiated by the city. So, the city has played a variety of different roles in the development of economic development, but at the present time, we don't see an economic, anything on the economic horizon that would dictate necessarily that we change the form of government. So, and of course, one of the main things that we can do is just look at what you're doing, and really, the inquiry that we have is, how are we doing? How are things? And that's really what we want to know, and that's what we want to know from you, and what could be done to make it better. So, first, I'd like to tell you that we have a standing invitation for you, to all of you council members. We set aside a couple hours, and all, if you'd like to be on the agenda, just let Vicky in the mayor's office know, and we'll make it happen, and we'll allocate as much time as you'd like to have, so that you can provide your input, and I know some of you have indicated already that you'd like to provide some input. But I would ask you to take the initiative, and just let us know that you would like to be heard. We'll be hearing from the mayor this next week, and also Neil Dobler, who served as interim city manager, and was, provided a great deal of leadership when I was on the council years ago. So, with the standing invitation, I also have a few minutes here, and I do want to call your attention to the charter ordinance itself. I think most of you have been furnished a copy of that, maybe in preparation for this meeting, or whatever. But, and it really tells you what we can consider, and what we are going to be taking a look at, but we can always look at the composition of the council. How well is our nine members working? Anybody have a different idea? We can look at elections. It's kind of odd, having, in some years, there's hardly, there's no one else on the ballot, other times, there is, and it makes it kind of different, and maybe something can be done about that. You hear from time to time, people advocating running at large, or running in a manner that is kind of like the, like the school board, where you run from a district for the primary, and then you get elected by the city at large in the general election. There are just, so, anything that, even the council districts, do we need nine members? We understand that we're really the only city that has nine. Nothing wrong with nine, but maybe there's a different number that would be more attractive. So, any of the things that you see, the functions, functions of the mayor, and we had heard some ideas in regard to that, the functions of the council members, and how that could be improved, or things that could be done to salaries, or some of the issues that we'll be taking a look at, and anything that you would like to call our attention to. We have just a few minutes, and, but I do kind of want to open up the floor now, and say that if any of you have some ideas for us initially, to get us started, or whatever, we invite your comments. With that, I'll just kind of open things up, and see if you can give us some feedback to kind of prepare us in setting up our meetings, and utilizing the personnel that we've got.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Are there any questions? Okay, before we get started, it's, we have something else on the agenda as well, right?
Deputy Mayor, we do not have any other items scheduled for this. We have a post-executive, executive session.
Okay, all right, okay. Elaine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim, I'm real interested in citizen input, and I was visiting with Judy about the idea that, you know, I had 700 emails in my district, and would send out something about, you know, if they couldn't make it to the meetings to provide input, that they could send their input, and yet, I wouldn't want any one of you to get 700 emails, and I don't thank everybody. But is the city gonna, and maybe this question is for Jim, the other Jim, are we going to have anything on the website where people could comment on the citizen review committee's work, or, you know, even, you know, getting input from the citizens as to how they feel about city government and how things are going? So, in this day and age of technology, it would be sure a simple way of getting that done.
Sure. And by the way, I didn't mention to you, but we have scheduled, week after next, a, two meetings, public meetings, at the library, and library and we'll schedule more if we need to. And we do, we are putting information up on the website, but I'll kind of yield to the city clerk here to maybe give us more insight on the website, and whether we can make it interactive, so that we can receive information.
Right now, on the mayor's page, there is a link that will take you to all of the minutes for the committee, the review committee. Also, I'm sure that it would not be a problem to add that, because I know the city does that for other things, so I would just need to get with Susie in communications. I'm sure we can make that happen.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate that suggestion. It's a good idea.
Mayor, we'll go.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I want to also acknowledge the work of the committee. All of us are involved in weekly meetings, and to date, they have had perfect attendance every Thursday, for a minimum of two hours, 1 to 3, and also scheduling these public meetings. So, this is, you know, it's a commitment, a serious commitment, and I've attended or sat in on parts of the meetings, and they're taking it very seriously. So, and I would say to the citizens, you know, they, they're seeking input, and, you know, this is really the phase to provide it, I think, to the extent that we can give the broadest view, whatever philosophies, ideas we have, now is really the time to pass them on, so that then they can start eventually sifting through these, and developing recommendations to come back to the council.
It seems to be a thing that we have, on average, maybe once a decade, and a little bit more, and it is always good to have a citizen's inquiry, and that's what we're there for, is to just receive the information, and then let you know what we thought had merit, and what we want to bring forward. Other ideas, thoughts, questions?
Campos.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. Only suggestion I would have to you is in considering consolidating nine council seats down to some lower number. Right now, a council seat represents a little over 14,000 people in our city of Topeka. I worked on the redistricting commission prior to sitting on the council. I think consolidating that to a smaller, a smaller governing body would put more burden, more of a burden on that council person, because you would have more people represented, and therefore, you'd have to get back to more constituents, as it is now. We kind of have the city fractured nine different ways, with 14,000 being per district. I was a little confused when you spoke about ECO DVO. Can you touch a little more on what you're trying to look for there? We currently have a partnership right now, is JDO, the city and the county function together for economic development in the city and in the county. Are you, are you trying to ask if you want to see economic development brought forth from an individual council member, or if you want to, I'm just kind of a little lost?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear on that. At various times, at one time, the city actually had their own ECO DVO person, if you will, and department, and that, we no longer have that. As you mentioned, we do have the partnership with the JDO, and that, and we'll be hearing from them, and, but I guess, really more, I guess, an example of where you would change government was in Kansas City, Kansas. The government they had there was not considered to be working very well, and so they looked at consolidation. Then economic development came along in Kansas City, and led them to adopt certain measures, and to change things a bit, to help accommodate the development of economic development. So, that's a good reason to look at, you know, how can government help? And if it means making some changes, that kind of thing, to help accommodate, or whatever, then that would be a good driver. I guess my point is that I don't see external drivers at this point, so much as I have at various times, when the former government became an issue. There was actually a citizens committee that asked to have the former government looked at and changed back in 2004, 2005. We don't see that today, and so right now, we haven't identified drivers, but then we're just getting into it, and we're looking for those, and we're looking for your ideas as to those as well.
If I may, just a quick follow-up. I would just, if I may, give a little advice. This form of government was formed in 86, with the idea that, the genesis was that the commission-based form of government underrepresented quite a bit of the city of Topeka and citizens on various parts of the city. So, moving toward an at-large districts throughout the city, that's not something that I would favor, because each district in the city is very unique. They offer a very unique tapestry to the overall fiber of this city, and I think it's important to understand that moving forward, that the districts are just merely not precincts put together by numbers, but they are, in many ways, a subculture within our city, that we've tried to keep together that process. Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I know, Mr. Reardon, in, when they did put the city manager form of government, what I heard loud and clear from the people was accountability. They wanted somebody that they could go to, to hold accountable, and that's, that's one of the things that I heard loud and clear. For instance, you know, the city manager, you know, he's accountable for the day-to-day operations, you know, and I don't know, there were citizens that felt like the mayor, you know, had too much on his, on his hands, you know, so that's, that's what I heard in 2000, 2005, because I ran when we changed that form of government, but I'm glad to see that you've spoken with Lisa Stubbs, because she was a part of that committee. I don't know if there was any minutes from that, from that committee, she would probably have them, Jenny might have them, that the committee would look at that as well.
We'll have two things.
Because they worked, they worked long, long and hard.
Yes, it did.
Betty Dunn was a big factor in that, and so I would suggest that the committee look at why they wanted to really, really change that. I too am glad to hear that you're having citizens' input, because I hear all the time that they want to go back to the strong mayor form of government. So, I hear a little bit of both. They like the city manager, they like the strong mayor form of government. I hear that they want full-time council peoples, I hear that, you know, that they don't. I mean, I think there's a lot of people out there that don't know that we work full-time. I don't, you know, if you've been on here long enough, you've been accused of that, you know, not returning those calls in a timely manner. So, so those are some concerns, and I do appreciate it. I will share some of my thoughts, and come to the committee, and make a point to come, and share some of my thoughts as well.
Right.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment? Nathan?
First, Mr. Reardon, I've attended one of your meetings, and followed the progress online on the other ones, and I think you're doing a great job. I think it's a very impressive committee, a very thoughtful committee, and I commend the work that you're doing. One of the issues that was brought up earlier was the idea of representation via at-large districts, or through council districts, and I think that's, that goes to the heart of any, any form of government that we're examining, is how do we best represent the people? I think, I think there's a wonderful, it may not, may not apply directly to your reorganization, or the, you know, looking at different types of reorganization along economic development lines, but I think that that's a theme that runs through any form of government, because that is an important function of government. And one of the things that I found most interesting in the, in the meeting that I, the last meeting that I attended, was the exploration of the hybrid form of government. I think council member Campos makes an excellent point, that we do need to make sure that all areas of the city are represented, but we also need to make sure that factionalism or sectionalism doesn't overwhelm the process, particularly with regard to economic development, that we don't end up in an area where we have one part of the city fighting against another part of the city, which prevents the entire city from, from growing. And I know one of the proposals by the gentleman, I'm forgetting his name, from the League of Nations, or from the League of Municipalities, talked about, yeah, talked about how, how there are, there are several cities in this state that do a hybrid approach, where, say, if we had nine council members, we would have five at-large council members and four districts, so that we don't have all of our council members from a three-block area, but we still have a large enough block of people who have the entire city as their constituency, and, and their interest, or the other way around, do four and five that way. I think that's, that was, that was the most intriguing approach that I heard in that meeting, and I would very much encourage the committee to, to keep exploring those options, and to explore the best way to, to both provide representation to the citizens of Topeka in a way that, that is functionable, that allows us to function efficiently for the city as a whole. And once again, I think you guys are doing a great job, and thank you for coming up here today.
Thank you, Mr. Shman.
Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. Reardon? Karen, I'm sorry.
All right. I too want to thank you, the three of you that are here, and through you, all five, thank you so much for agreeing to serve, and for getting us off to such a great start. In terms of thoughts on my part, overall, I have really looked at this for a long time. We end up in these conversations a lot, as you know, and my conclusions, and this is just me, is that, you know, and I went through all these changes of forms of government here. I started with the commission, and was here when we changed to the strong mayor, and council, and all those decisions, and pros and cons from then, and then the switch to city manager as well. And I guess my conclusion is that no form of government is perfect, no matter how hard we try, and I had mixed feelings and questions when we made those changes. The voters chose, after much deliberation, the form of government that we have today. It's worked well in other places, that's one of the reasons they chose it, and it's only been 10 years that we've had it in place. Whenever we make a change, there is a setback that takes five to 10 years to recover, a big change, anyway, and we've seen that, because over this 10 years, we're, we're just now at the point where we think we're going to get this system right, with the form that we have, repositioning, and, and working on details with the council and mayor, and the relationship with the city manager, and the staffing, you know, settling in all of So, I'm open to considerations of all these things, but overall, I'm not certain it would be wise for us to change our form of government at this time, when we're just now hitting, hitting astride, I think. Again, I'm open. I think instead, that our goal with the commission, and as the council, should be to make sure that the charter is absolutely set the way it should be for the form of government that we have, and to work out all the bugs and the tweaks. I've got a list of particulars that I'll bring you, I will come and visit as well, but, but overall, that's how I'm feeling, and again, I'm open. Thank you.
Ms. Ortiz, if I might follow up on a couple of your inquiries, both of you. The, we have received information in regard to the charter ordinance, and some of the drafting that could potentially be improved, and some of the drafting may in fact be somewhat contrary to what the law allows. I remember numerous arguments and numerous interpretations by various city attorneys, and we've had several, we had several while I was on the council. The current city attorney actually issued an opinion as, as an assistant attorney general. She has been informed by Don Moller, and by others, of potential flaws, legal flaws in it, and so, and in fact, she's working, the city attorney is working on that right now. So, that is the subject of, a very good subject of inquiry. Ms. Ortiz, the, when we heard from Mrs. Stubbs, she, she made an excellent presentation, and I'm sure we'll have good minutes, we've had excellent capture of Don Moller's presentation, but I asked Ms. Stubbs to put down her thoughts in writing, and she, she put together notes that I think will, will give some guidance, particularly if you're new to the council, maybe you haven't been on as long as some others. I think it's a great refresher, to go back and look and say, why isn't we have what we have? What were they trying to accomplish there? What ill, what shortcomings were perceived at the time? Why did, why did the, why did the citizens committee ask to have it done, and why did the city have to vote on it? So, and we'll make those available, and see that you get copies of those, have those distributed to you as well. And of course, that will go into our, our report, as to her recommendations and so forth, so thank you for that request.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. And I think the discussion here, and, and my thoughts are, we have a reasonably good form of government, and it's working reasonably well, you know, and I think, as has been said, any form of government works as well as those who are a part of that former government. And my thoughts are, it, our charter does not require major overhaul, major overhaul, significant change, perhaps, I think perhaps, but there is some tweaking, that I think that those of us who've been that I think that those of us who've been here, oh, we've seen. There's some, there's some confusing points, some places where it's sort of conflicts between what says in one area to another. And that's what I think is the highest priority, is really to clarify some of those issues. I think all of us want the best government possible to best serve the citizens of Topeka. And we may not get the perfect one, but we'll, I think, make some improvements that, that we, and I'm hopeful that the citizens would, would want so that we have the best working form of government we can have. And that's where we are.
It's the tweaking, thank you. It's the tweaking that we look to you for. You're where the rubber meets the road, if you will. And you know what tweaking needs to be done and, or at least you can offer your insights. And that's truly, if we accomplish nothing else, if we can make recommendations that make it more workable, then, then we'll have accomplished our, our purpose. So that's why we invite your input. And don't, don't hesitate to let us know these little things. We can tackle issues that you can't. Salary, you know how much time you, you put in. I perceive that it takes more time now than it did when I was on the council. And we need to know these things. And we can make recommendations in these regards. So I, and I appreciate the give and take you're giving me tonight because you've, you're certainly pointing us in the right direction.
Any more questions or comments? Nathan?
I had just one more point that I forgot to mention when I spoke earlier. And this is exactly what you were just talking about, one of the small things that, that may require some tweaking, that I don't, I'm not sure how much past councils had to deal with it. And that is, the new Cora and coma laws sometimes require, for instance, if I'm on a committee of three, I cannot talk to anybody else in that committee unless we're in an official meeting. If I have an idea that I just want to bounce off the wall, I have to convene a meeting in order to do that. Whereas if those were committees of five, I could bounce an idea off of somebody else because I wouldn't be breaking the quorum. Some, some of those factors, and I'm not sure if anything, can make that more efficient. There, there are very, very real, very important protections that come along with that. And I'm not trying to minimize those at all. But a way to work around those, those areas more effectively might be something that, that we want to consider in this. And again, there may be nothing that can be done for it. But I think it is one of those small things that we might want to just take a look at.
I personally, and I know Ms. Muller, having been the city attorney and, and frankly, the league has been your advocate, if you will, to a certain sensibility to the coma laws. And over the years, the league has spoken frequently on, on almost overreach as far as, I mean, you can't, the communication barrier is so hard that it really makes it very hard for you to do your, your work. I can tell you that I was the subject of a coma inquiry by the attorney general, in fact, I think the current city attorney, if I remember right, for potentially overstepping my, violating the coma. Was found not to be in violation, but could very easily have because it's very easy to be in violation of. So we have a very strong awareness of, or at least I do, and I know Ms. Muller does. But I can tell you that probably the place that that gets resolved is in the legislature. And as long as you have, you have a legislature who doesn't play by the same rules as you do, it's, it's going to be hard. But I, I feel your pain. I've been there and I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. And I, I want to emphasize, I, I think those protections are incredibly important in a lot of ways. But I think, you know, and as, as you explain, the experience that you sometimes have with that, the idea that if, if, if I'm on a committee and somebody from the public wants to talk to me and another member of that committee, we can't do that unless we all convene a meeting and notice it out. And, and, you know, and that's obviously needs to be the case when any action is taken. But, but yeah.
We can't either, by the way, as this committee, we have to go through the, yeah.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Campos.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. I just have one more quick thing to add. I'd be curious to see what your committee brings back to us in regards to our, our boards and our committees that we appoint, such as the Sustainable Advisory Board or the zoning, zoning board or any of that, and how, how they function in bringing policy back to this council and then having that vote on. One thing that I would like to see is more interaction with our boards and our committees, not the ones that we form here on this body, but the ones that we appoint people to and having policy brought back to us. I'd be curious to see what, what you guys can come up with when you get some time. Or even actually reaching out to board members and committee members and speaking with them.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, that the subject of boards and committees has not come up yet. And we also believe you're in the best position, since you interface with these committees. So again, we would invite you to give us your enlightenment, particularly in regard to those, because that has not yet been a subject of inquiry. But we definitely will take note of that.
I agree. I, I believe that they are not playing the integral part in which they were designed to, to be. So thank you, Madam Deputy. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other questions or concerns, comments?
I know you are on a short schedule. Thank you very much for giving us the time. We appreciate it. We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
City manager?
Just to, thank you, Madam Deputy. I just wanted to clarify that we will not be requesting the executive session after we got some new information this morning. We want to run some numbers and come back later.
Thank you.
And Chad is still the city attorney, just in case everybody got nervous.
Okay, we knew that. With that being said, this is, is there any other comments or questions or concerns before we adjourn? If not, the work session is adjourned.